I'll order this regular meeting of the Superior Planning Commission, not the Tanning Booth. Planning Commission from February 7th, 2012. Phil, would you call the roll, please?
Chairperson John Craig-Crafton.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Craig Prestisetti.
Here.
Commissioners Joanne Eaton.
Here.
Ian Elberson.
Kent Folsom.
Here.
Lois Harden here.
Bob McCool.
Here.
Rochelle Whitmister.
Here.
Tom Ricker.
Present.
Assistant Town Manager Beth Moiski.
Here.
Planner Fred Fox.
Here.
Attorney Christine Strzesteski.
Here.
Okay, good. The item three is public comments on consent agenda and non-agenda items. If anyone out in the vast audience would like to come forth and speak to the commission regarding items on the consent agenda or non-agenda items, this will be your opportunity to come forward.
My name is Jay Slider.
Just come up to the mic, please, if that's all right. And just state your name and your address.
My name is Jay Slider. I work, or I live at 7482 Marshall Road here in Superior. My comment is that in planning this storage facility--
We're-- it's all right.
I thought it was open for comments.
It's on-- we'll have a public hearing on the Guardian Storage. So that'll be the time to do this. This is non-agenda type stuff.
Okay.
Just anything else you'd like to talk.
No.
Okay, but if it's about this, we'll hold comment until we get to the public hearing. If that's okay?
Sorry.
No worries.
Evening. Susan Bauer, 1770 Morrison Court, Superior. I wanted to comment on the 88th Street pedestrian crossing. It'll have to be another place tonight.
Oh. It's not a public hearing, right?
No.
It's okay to-- okay. Go ahead.
Okay. A bit confused, but I'll go with you. I just wanted to offer some feedback about the 88th Crossing because I live on Shamrock and off of Shamrock and 88th. And I know you're going to go through a presentation tonight, but it is so hard to get outside of Shamrock during those peak volume hours in the morning. Cars coming from the horizons are safe, safe way, do not really have to maneuver difficult-- you know, their maneuver around that roundabout is not very difficult. They can pretty much kind of graze through there and just hit the accelerator and head up northbound on 88 to Monarch High School. They pick up speed when they come, when they're coming from that direction, when they come through the roundabout. It's a real problem. I'm always walking in the morning and I stand there by the side like, you know, "Would you please give me the courtesy of slowing down and letting me cross?" That does not happen. Fifty-- at least 50% of the time, it does not happen.
Excuse me. Susan, are you referring to the pedestrian crossing that's on 88 right after Circle?
Yes, yes. So not only is it hard for cars to get out from Shamrock onto 88, either direction, it's easier to go around our, in our complex and come out on Enterprise Street to get onto 88 than it is to get onto 88 from Shamrock in the morning. There is a crosswalk right there by Shamrock and 88. It does not have no electronic switch for light activation, and that is just the most useless crosswalk I've ever seen. Now, there is a light switch down by the bridge, and that's more effective if the cars that are coming southbound are coming along at such a high speed that you can hear them hitting the brakes. And you wonder about the cars that are coming over the crest of the bridge and whether or not there'll be a rear end. So that's a concern I have. I have actually thought for some time maybe putting a speed bump in would be a very viable solution, either before the Shamrock or after the Shamrock, but it would force cars to slow down and maintain the speed limit. So those are my concerns regarding 88 because I always come out on Shamrock, which tees into it, and I'm either dealing, I'm either walking it or I'm trying to get out on a car during high-volume times. It's just nearly impossible. It's easier for me to go around to Enterprise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. If there's no other public comment on consent agenda items or non-agenda items, we'll move on to item four, the consent agenda approval of the November 1st, 2011 minutes. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Someone would like to make one?
I'm looking for the minutes.
Okay. Oh, okay. Hang on, one correction.
I was absent from that meeting, but there was a reference to me being there. On page two, it says Commissioners Folsom and Hurd stated they both felt their questions were answered during the last work session. Okay.
Thank you.
Just want to make sure somebody left me here.
With that minor correction, would you like to make that motion again?
I should move to approve the minutes from the November--
First.
First. That's corrected.
Okay, that's a motion by Commissioner McCool and a second by Commissioner Eaton. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Next item is item five, a public hearing and approval of resolution making a recommendation to the Board of Trustees to approve an amendment to the Guardian Storage 76th Final Development Plan. Let's see. We will start the public hearing procedure. Phil, is there proof of publication?
Did you--
Officially opened the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Yes, I do have--
You have proof? Okay, thank you. And the next section is, does the applicant have a presentation?
Yes.
Would you like me to introduce a little bit?
Sure.
Okay, I'll do that. Fred Fox, Consulting Town Planner Planner. This is a proposal for amending the approved final development plan for Guardian Storage. The case number is FDP-8-2012-1, and I would point to a map, but it's covered up by the screen. But at any rate, this is on the Guardian Storage located across the street, 76th Street from, basically generally across the street from the Costco building, and this is a project that was approved, I believe, in 2010. Basically, we're going to, the applicant is asking to amend their approved FDP to change some of the, what they call flex office space to storage space. There is no decrease in the, but in the amount of square footage, so there's no change in the site plan or the footprint of the building. It's just that the use is, is being amended to, or not so much amended, but to just tell us that they're going to use it all for storage space and not that amount of space for the flex office. The other changes are to the architecture of the building, and this is to, from their presentation to us, deals with providing a more constructible building than what was originally designed. So there's some changes there. The applicant is here to describe the changes to you, and I believe you all have a packet. The proposed changes were in there as well as three sheets from the original FDP, and the elevations didn't quite match from old to new. It did when you looked at it carefully, but from a page-to-page standpoint, there was, it was a little bit of fumbling. So I mean, I had to fumble with it, but that's the, I think their proposal is a little clearer the way they've set it up. It was, the original FDP was a little bit, set up a little bit differently. But we did get a chance to see what the original was approved versus what they're proposing now. So I'd ask the applicant to introduce themselves and go ahead and make a presentation to the commission.
Kevin Cohen, 635 Four Mile Canyon Drive in Boulder. I'm with Guardian Storage Solutions, and it's good to be back. I see some familiar faces and some new faces from a couple of years ago. My intent tonight was to give an update on where we are on the project, because I'm sure everybody would like to know, and really to focus on the proposed changes only. I was not going to go into, you know, why this is a good use or the project as a whole because I feel like we've been through that process and really wanted to focus on what we were requesting tonight. But certainly, if there are changes, anything I can do to familiarize you with the project as a whole, of course, we're happy to do so. So first, I just wanted to give you an update on the project. As Fred said, the FDP was approved in February 2010, and this project has been put on the sidelines for a couple of years due to the recession. And I want to emphasize, it's put on, been put on the sidelines, not because of its potential for success, but really, the macroeconomic conditions in the market have made it extremely difficult to source lending and equity for new construction projects, and that's really what has delayed it. For us, we believed in the prospects for success in this project since day one. It's always been a question of when, not if. And to that end, we've maintained a very expensive option on the property through making quarterly and monthly non-refundable deposits to the owners of the land, which total almost $100,000 now. So we've really believed in this, in this project and just wanted to make sure the timing was right. We have signed a term sheet with a local lender, which was a huge obstacle and a big milestone for us and one that we're very proud of and excited about. The appraisal is taking place right now, and we've engaged a builder who is also an architect. DCB Construction is here tonight, and they've lent a lot of the insight that kind of guided the architectural changes we'll discuss tonight. And our goal, if everything goes right, would be to break ground in late spring or early summer. So to push this project over the goal line, and what I mean by that is to secure the final lending, the appraisal, to secure the equity we need to move forward, we are requesting two important modifications. The first are minor changes to the exterior elevations. What we've done is we've articulated the proportions of materials and the massing to be more constructible and more consistent with the surrounding marketplace. Mike Bray, who's with DCB, is going to elaborate on the specifics of this, but I'll just speak to it from a very high level. If you take a step back and compare the proposed design tonight versus what was already approved, the discerning eye is not going to notice a huge difference in this project. This is a Class A property. This is going to be arguably the nicest storage development in the state of Colorado. So, but we have accomplished three kind of important items with this redesign. The first thing and most important thing to me is that our new architect has kind of given us a vision for a cleaner design on the project. And when I think, when you look at it, you will see cleaner lines, better transitions, and a better proportion and balance of materials through the project. We kind of had an opportunity in this last step to move forward, to take a look back at what was approved previously and kind of figure out whether we were happy with it. And the term we kept coming up with, and for lack of a better word, was it was very busy. There were many transitions, many materials. We had some faces, not in this exact order, where it would go from block to sandstone to brick to stucco to glass to metal and back to brick. And, you know, not only is that a busy look in our opinion, but, you know, one of the things that our architect, who is a builder, advised is when you have that many transitions, you have a lot of different vendors, a lot of different builders coming in and out of the project, building on top of each, on topping, on top of one another's work. And so over the long term, that can sacrifice the integrity and the durability of the project. So we do think, as Fred pointed out, we also have not only a project that's not as busy, that looks nicer, but is more constructible. And finally, we're going to show you some pictures. We think the new design is actually more consistent with the adjacent Superior marketplace, which was, you know, a goal of ours all along. Sorry. The second request is the elimination of the flex space portion of the project. The market has not been kind over the last couple of years to office space in general and flex space in particular. And what I'm going to show you tonight is that there is a vast supply of vacant flex space in the market today. So when we originally proposed this project and this product in particular, we had positioned it as nice, affordable office space for the small business owner. Well, what's happened over the last couple of years is vacancy rates have gone up, rental rates have gone down, and owners are desperate to get people into their properties. They're giving away free rent. They are giving away amenities, amenities in order to attract tenants, amenities such as fully furnished offices, free phone, Wi-Fi, whatever the case might be. And what it really means today is there's never been a better time for somebody, for a small business or an individual, to find nice, affordable office space. It's kind of like they say, there's never been a better time to buy a home now if you can sell your existing home. Well, people looking for office space aren't as married to, to an existing space, so it's a great time for them to find a product. We ran a market search of available flex space currently in the Boulder, Superior, Louisville, and Broomfield markets, and the criteria that we used to most closely resemble what we were developing was 1,000 to 10,000 square foot units, $8 to $12 per square foot. And what we came up with, and we ran this two days ago, were 38 properties within 10 minutes of the proposed site with vacancy. The vacancy on those 38 properties, 572,401 total available square feet for rent. Of those 38 buildings, there's a 44% vacancy available. The average asking price, we don't know what they're actually renting it for among the 38 properties, but the asking price is $7 per foot. So the conclusion we take from this is there's really not a justification to build additional product of this type in the market. And doing so is just going to really leave us with empty space and really will greatly harm the economic vitality of the project. I wanted to give some perspective on what we're eliminating because in terms of pure office space, it's a very small amount of office that we're eliminating. The total designated flex area for this project was 7,500 square feet divided into five separate units. Each unit would have had one office that would have been, and I would say in the neighborhood of 200 to 300 square feet with warehouse space directly on the back. So what we're talking about eliminating here is five office units, which would have made up roughly 1,000 to 1,500 square feet of the entire project. We will convert that space to climate-controlled storage. The remaining 6,6500 square feet that we were calling warehouse space will now be climate-controlled storage. So on a grand scale, it's not, it does not change the dramatic, you know, it's not like we eliminated a lot of office space. It's five small units. I thought it was important to quantify for you what this might look like on an annual income basis with and without the flex space because while the physical impact of removing five small offices might not be material, the economic impact is significant. So we looked at this with flex and without flex. As office warehouse, you know, what we're really looking at needing to find in lease is a user who requires 1,500 square feet, who can sign a year budget, who has $12,000 a year in their budget in a market that's overflowing with available space. We have no confidence that we can do that. But we did want to look at it, well, what if we achieved a 25% occupancy rate? 7,500 square feet and an asking price of $7 per square feet, again, it would probably be lower because that's what they're asking for in the market. That would generate annual income of about $13,000 to us with a 25% occupancy rate. I put a line in here called Superior Income at 3%. We negotiated and agreed to a public facilities fee on the entire project where the town would receive 3% of the gross rents. So that would come out to about $394. Without the flex space, so as climate-controlled storage, we are marketing to the resident or business that can use anywhere from 25 square feet to 100 to 300 square feet in a market with no other options as far, as far as climate-controlled storage on a flexible month-to-month lease. So we definitely will have more units to rent, but we know how to rent them. It's a lot easier to rent them, and we can do it at a much higher rental rate per square foot. So you'll notice that the total square footage here is 6375. The reason for the difference is on the self-storage, we lose a little bit of space utilization because we would have an interior hallway, so we'd probably net out about 6375. We know we can get a rental rate of $17.93, and we know we can accomplish a 90% occupancy rate, which translates to a total annual income of over $100,000 and $3,000 a year for the town on that product alone. So at the end of the day, we want to provide something to the community that is needed, but as a result of that, will make economic sense to us as a business. So I hope this demonstrates what we're faced with, and if there aren't any questions for me at this point, I'm going to pass it on to Mike to go through the architectural changes.
Thank you. My name's Michael Bray. I'm the Director of Design for DCB Construction. And I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with this, have been through this before here, but I thought I'd give you a quick overview of the site. Like Kevin and Fred had mentioned, the site plan has not changed from what has been approved back in 2010. We kept exactly the same footprint, traffic patterns, entrances, parking, gate locations, vents, landscaping, everything is exactly the same. The footprints of the buildings are exactly the same, lengths, depths, heights, everything on there. But I'll give you a quick overview. I-36 is up here someplace. Over here is Costco. So here's the main, the main entrance coming into it. The flex space that Kevin was just talking about is this area right here, this little 7,500 square feet right there that we have this additional parking for that we're going to keep as is. The rest of the space, this is the entry office right here, the sales office, that you would come in and check in and rent your unit or whatever. And then the rest of it is all storage. We call this Building A, Building B, and Building C. Building A is a one-story structure, right here, all one-story. There is storage doors on all three of these sides right here. There is no doors or anything like that on this side right here. We just have a nice, clean facade on there. And you'll see when we get to the elevations on that. Building 2 is a two-story structure, and this is a little bit unique. The site itself slopes, this is the high end of the site, slows down towards the east on here. So Building 2 had to be designed such that the lower level of Building 2 is built into a hill, if you can kind of imagine that. So we only have access on this side for Building 2. For the upper level, we only have access on this side right here because obviously this side here is the second story above the grade at that point. Building 3 is all doors just on this side right here, and it's access and a great level right there. Building 2, again, we have a recessed dock entry right there for larger trucks, get out of the weather. They can get in there, unload their stuff, and get into the building. The lower portion of this is climate-controlled, as is this portion over here now, that's going to be climate-controlled now, too. For, for large bulk items for drop-off for the first floor, there's a ramp right here with a dock right here. These, there will also be doors along here at that point. So basically, as I mentioned, nothing has changed from what was approved on there at that point. Show this right here. This is the original elevations that was approved back then. The only, the only difference here is the flex space right here and the five entrances that Kevin had alluded to, for the front offices of 200 to 250 square feet, and in the back is all warehouse. You can see the doors right here, if you remember, right here at that point up there. And then here's the office. You check in for the office right there. The, let's see here. This is the, these are the end elevations of all the buildings facing north, up there towards I-36 up there. You will see when we get to the new elevations, they have changed very, very little. The one major change we did do was we took off this roof element of this building right here. We felt that it was, it was really out of scale for that small of a building, for a one-story structure. It actually drew more attention to that end of the building, which we really didn't need. We want to draw the attention to the front of the space. So we kept that exactly as it is right there. And you'll see that when I get to the other elevations. On the south side, here's the opposite side of those buildings right here. Again, all three buildings. And you can see the grade difference that we have to deal with here. Here's the lower level, Building 2, upper level, Building 2 right there. So this is the opposite side. Again, this has changed very little, except for the materials on here. We have simplified it to, to make it much more proportional, the materials, not so busy. Kevin had mentioned that, not so busy. The, for these scale of buildings, for these size of buildings and everything else, you can get too overwhelmed with too many different colors, textures, and all this other stuff. So we, so we felt it was very, very important to, to, to tone that, some of that stuff down a little bit on there. Let me walk directly into this here. I'm sure you're all aware of this right here. This is the Costco building right here. We are very sensitive to the stucco that's used on here, same colors, although this is a pretty poor floor, we apologize for that, but a little bit darker. The stone work that we, that we've introduced on there, the hip roof element that's up in here. So we've taken a lot of these elements and incorporated it into the project. Those have, have remained since day one on there. We have not changed those. Here's just another shot there. You can show the stone right here and the ephesus on there. These here are the new proposed elevations. Again, this is Building 1 right here. This is the entry, the office entry. It's a little bit fuzzy right here, but this was the flex space, this portion right here. These are the doors that still remain on there. We have taken the, the materials, the stone and everything else here that used to be masonry and some other things, and we've introduced more stone at this thing right here, more in keeping also with the Costco, with the big stone towers and everything. Trying to eliminate those a little bit more. Big glass entry right here, big two-story lobby space that's right there. And we've taken the stone all the way across the whole bottom right here. The entry gate or the security gate is right about in this area right here, separating the storage side from the living side on there. This is all ephesus up in here. Those two things are right there. And before, there was only one ephesus color. Right now, we're proposing two ephesus colors on there. And the darker one, we'd like to bring that out a little bit, create a little bit more thickness, create a little bit of shadow lines in there. thickness, create a little bit of shadow lines in there. And then, we have these little elements right here, that are just little highlights, if you remember on the Costco building, those are the little squares that were up in the ephesus panels there too. So, we've kind of borrowed from that a little bit, and just kind of copied that over here. These elements right here are, are metal. He finishes again, just to break up the mass of the building, and also to, to introduce some vertical elements into it, take away from the horizontal looks to it. North side of the building has access virtually unchanged from the, from the original one, except we did introduce more stone on there. Here's the hip roof at the office. Over here is where we took off the, off the, took off the hip roof, I'm sorry, off that third building over there. As you can see now, we have a nice, nice rhythm going through here, we don't have to come up here, bounce up here, bounce up here again, so we have a nice little thing here to break in the parapets, just to, to, want to meet the zoning requirements, and then also just for visual interest on there. These are the CMU towers that we were bringing all the way up before, they would stop, the stone would be introduced, and the metal would be introduced, it was kind of a mishmash of things on there. The dash lines are just some, some, some proposed signage areas. This is the backside of building 3, which faces on the west side right here. Another slide, the next one right here. This was a, you know, port elevation for the town, I remember reading in documents and everything else. We have also simplified this right here in terms of the vertical elements, which we have kept, we have just changed the materials. Again, once again, we've gone with two different color ephesus here, and the white color. These right here are actually the, that's the darker ephesus, this is masonry, again, these are the metal panels. And that's a continuous theme throughout the project on there. The stone or brush right here that wraps around that whole base of building number 3. And here's the, the south elevation facing the residential side over here. This has not changed either on there, except again, we've introduced more masonry here, took off the metal, that was the, there's some metal inserts in there that didn't really seem to make much sense, it would just look like it was applied for some reason or matter. So, we took those off, added more masonry to it, to give them a little bit more, more visual interest. If they face something, I'll show you the colors on there. And again, we just continued with the same thing, the darker ephesus, lighter ephesus on here, masonry ends, and just made it much more consistent around all the sides of the building on there. With this slide in here, this is similar to the slide that, that I just showed on here, showing the landscaping that is being proposed for these two sides, the west side and the south side. Take a look at the landscape plan, I've got a copy of it here. These will be heavy screen of the landscaping on there. So, it didn't seem to make much sense, especially on the backside of this building right here, to have all those different materials on there, only to be hidden by the landscaping. So, we've simplified that again, and made them, made the panels much larger, so that they will show through. These trees obviously are, are eight, nine, twelve, eleven on here, but this gives you a little bit better feel for the vertical of the trees, the vertical of the panels of the building, the, the larger mass of those vertical elements on the building, and how they relate to the trees. Here's the landscape plan right here, just another short review. You can see all the trees that are in here. And again, this is the approved landscape plan that we, that we will not change. Go with this plan right here. And that's, that's it. Any questions that you may have?
Let's see. Does the staff have any additional presentation before we get to questions?
All I can say is, they made a proposal to the town, and we reviewed that, and made several suggestions, and we also had a fairly lengthy meeting with them discussing the changes that they were proposing, and what we thought they ought to improve on. And they basically did all, did all of the, through the negotiation, we came up with the elevations that we feel comfortable with as well, considering what they started with, what they initially proposed, and where we settled on in terms of this presentation here, so.
Anyone have questions of staff or the applicant?
Yeah, I have a question. Fred, wasn't the flex space aspect one of the things that kind of won the approval of the town board originally? Maybe I'm misremembering.
No, I don't think you're misremembering at all. I think that the flex space was a, a good idea, I think that was a part of the original approval that, that made some sense. And the board liked that, I know the planning commission liked it, we, we liked it. It's just come to pass that, that does not seem to be a very workable element at this time. Now, I asked them if that original flex space area could be reconverted back into flex space at some point if the market made it possible. And that's in our discussions within the way these, the building is constructed, and once they, you know, commit to all storage, that, that is a, that would be a fairly significant cost. And I believe in the description of the project, there was a paragraph there about that. So, I guess technically, one could say, you could do it. It would be, it would be costly to do it. One of the big things was that each of those offices had, of course, its own plumbing for bathrooms and whatnot, and so all that would have to be dealt with, besides some of the load character, carrying characteristics of the building would have to be modified, plus the entries, entries, you know, bored into the side of the wall. So, it would be expensive, but it, I suppose it's possible, but I, I think in prac, to be practical, I, I doubt that it would, would happen or come to pass.
Other questions?
Yeah, is the leasing office still full, full-time staff, like during the week? That would be, that would be the only human security issue on the property.
Well, one thing I didn't go through is, you know, our, our product, we have, we hire salespeople to run our office, not resident managers, so there's nobody that lives on site. We secure our property through extensive video surveillance, digital recording, alarms on every single storage unit. You know, the, the idea that somebody living on site is kind of an older way of, of doing business in our industry, and, but the leasing office, there will be somebody there six or seven days a week during their own business hours.
That's kind of like you do in Westminster, right?
That's exactly how we do it in Westminster, yes.
Questions?
With the elimination of the flex space, is all of that parking necessary? Could you cut out some of that parking?
Yeah, the parking is not necessary. This would be extra parking, what we wanted to do was keep the footprints as they were with the, so it didn't require a massive amendment to this whole project on there, because they do want to get going with this, and we didn't want to have, to take the time to go through the process again, and everything else that, that would require. So, so that's why this, this amendment is limited to the elimination of, of the flex space and modification of the materials.
Regarding the, the landscape on the west face, I thought, yeah, I thought I heard at first you said it was modified, so that more of the building would be exposed, and then I thought you said the landscaping plan didn't change at all, so I just wanted some clarification on.
Sure, yeah, the, the back of building 3 has been modified.
Okay.
Here's what I meant by that right there. The elevation right here. Before, there was a, there was a, I don't know, two or, two and a half foot stone base that was going through here and everything else, and I think there was some other materials, some more metal on there. We took off the metal and added masonry and more of the color stuff on there. The landscaping stays exactly the same. We did modify the back of the building to have bigger, larger masses on there, as opposed to some of the skinny things on there.
So, the landscaping on that west side is exactly what it was in the question.
We tried to depict the, the, the landscaping on there, it had a reasonable part. Eventually, this will all grow in, as you can see on the, on the, on the landscape plan, that shows mature trees, those will all grow in together, and it'll be just one massive hedge back there eventually.
The, the building, as I recall, on the west side is the, is the perimeter, right? There's not a fence, right?
Right.
But there is on the south side.
Let me go back to the site plan here. Yes, there's a fence, there's a security gate right here, and as the fence comes in here and dives into the building here, and the fence picks up again down here, comes around, and there's a security fence right here.
And remind me what that fence material is?
It's a, I believe it's a metal, it's just a metal picket type, I believe.
Oh, six-foot estate-style picket fence, right? So, that's a steel, metal, steel.
Steel, rock, correct, not chain link or anything like that.
And so, really, most of the landscaping occurs outs, at least on those elevations occurs outside of the fence line, is that correct?
Correct, yes. Yes, here's the fence line again right here, again, the fence line, so you can see all the landscaping. There is some along the building here, of course, but the vast majority, especially the trees, these are just shrubs. The trees are all on the center of the fence line.
I got a couple more questions. On the stone, the sandstone, the red sandstone, looks like you're trying to change it to more of a stripped sandstone type, is that what you're trying to do?
Yeah, I didn't go in there, I apologize, I shouldn't touch base on that. Here's the original, I hope it stays. Here was the original sample board that was approved, can you see this okay?
Yeah.
This was the sandstone that was approved on there, and these pieces, you know, these have been broken off to fit on the board here, and I'm not sure what manufacturer that was, but, but we've taken a little bit different look at it, and we wanted to try and get a little bit more, less uniformity in the color. As you can see, this is very consistent in the color, it's almost like a painted look on that. We've gone to a more, this is still a manufactured stone, but this, but this will have some, some grays in here, and some, some different colored reds and everything else, and you can see, you can see the patterns, the depths of, of this stone product right here is going to be out there than this right here.
But it's not your intention, wasn't your intention to match the color of the marketplace, is that correct?
No, no, not at all. Those, because the scale of those buildings, those require a different type of, of stone and scale and everything else, and they're, you know, we're much smaller, so, so, you know, and it's not exactly the same type of thing, but, but we're just trying to emulate it.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't want it to be.
Is that the blue of the doors?
This is very close. This will depend on the, on the actual manufacturer that we go to. The one that was, this is what was being proposed before, which is almost a purple color. The blue is really to match their corporate color on there. This is quite frankly, the closest I could get to the metal panel right now. It depends on which manufacturer we go with. This could be, this will all probably be a little bit bluer, a more true blue color, as opposed to this blue-gray here.
Do we need to have that color be on the south elevation, which faces homes?
Could, could you actually stand a little closer to the microphone, too, when you're talking?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right, it's being recorded and broadcast, so it would help, actually.
Sure.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, the, the north homes in Sagamore, their main bedrooms would be looking out over the Turnbull property toward your property, and I'm just wondering how blue that blue is going to be, and it kind of sticks out, and it's on an elevation toward homes, rather than, I can understand when you're facing the street, 76th Street, we want your corporate colors and things like that, but I, I'm not sure if we need that, that blue facing homes.
Okay. The only blue that will be, that will be exposed to, on any of the four elevations will be the blue roof of the office and these doors right here. There are no other doors that are facing any other sides of the property.
As I saw on the south.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, that's right, there was, I'm sorry, you're, you're absolutely correct. Yeah, there is right there, yes, yeah.
But where, there's still houses that, don't forget, were pretty dense, and so there, there's probably, you know, four houses that as they look out, they see kind of deep blue. It, it just seems like it breaks up the natural elements that are very nice, you have good natural colors, and then boom, you know, this, this real kind of intense blue.
Sure. Well, if I could address that, those doors that we're just talking about are right here. And once again, we have the landscaping right here with, with evergreen-type trees that are along there.
Well, like I'm saying, I'm talking about people, their bedrooms are up on a second story, and that's kind of their pleasure view, whatever, from their master bedrooms or whatever, and, and they'll look out, and they'll, from, from their angle, they'll be seeing bright blue.
Mr. Chair? May I ask a question? I don't mean to interrupt, but I, I think you're arguing about, or, or asking about something that was approved in the original plan?
Yeah, those were.
And so, it's not up for review, it seems like they want a slight color change, but if I, am I incorrect in saying that, that very bright blue in the right-hand corner of that, is that what was approved for the doors?
Correct.
In the original? Okay.
Correct, yes. Which is more of a bluish-purple on there. This is lots of on here, but, but again, that was approved on there. And there are only, I think there's four doors on there, I believe there were six doors. Six doors, yeah.
Yeah, I think it went up in the number of doors, so it kind of is more, more.
Are things going to be actively irrigated?
Oh, yes, they are, yes, yes.
Those medallions and accents that you've got sprinkled throughout the project now, what are they going to look like? Are they going to be like cast stone, or are you going to try to do that out of foam ephesus?
We're going to do that ephesus, and that will match the CMU on there, so it'll be a little bit darker. This is kind of hard, I'm sorry. This kind of gives you an impression. This is the, the ephesus color that, that is the bigger, wider color panels, and those little squares that you see looks similar to this right here, which matches the CMU. So, we're just bringing that color again throughout the, through the whole space right there. We didn't want to match this right here, the, the darker CMU or ephesus on here, just because to get, get another layer of colors in there.
Yeah, includes that banding thing that's going on too, on the elevations?
Let's see here. Where are you talking about there?
Yeah, the line, the band between the medallions, whatever.
All those right there?
Accent band?
Yeah, yeah, those are just reveal joints.
Okay.
Yeah, just reveal joints. Those will be deeper in there, so there'll be nice little shadow line going through there.
Okay.
Kind of breaks up the, just the flaps of the panels.
The caliper on the back trees along that landscape line, are they going to be pretty, pretty thick? Because what you've done is you've made the, the back wall on the east elevation, the west elevation. The west elevation, pretty massive, even though it's broken up by ephesus colors to try to give some variety, but if you have little spindly trees back there, it's still going to look pretty, pretty massive.
I forget, did the FDP require a certain caliper?
Well, yeah, and on the landscape plan, which has been approved, there is calipers, and there, in terms of the pines, they're foot height. So, we got some 12-foot pines, we've got some three-inch caliper deciduous, so they're starting off, we've got some 12, like I say, 12, some of the sprinkled in there are 12-foot pines, I mean, those are starting off almost like particularly on the west elevation, almost at the height of the building, if you're 12 feet, and one end is 50, so they're, they're already starting off at a pretty good size. That's not all of them, but it's, you know, scattered through there, so I thought, and in any way, we, you know, that, this was approved, and it, but it does have good caliber, and it does have good height for the trees.
I just didn't remember from before, because we have a much different elevation there.
Right.
And I knew we had some discussion of the trees, but what, what we settled on, I don't really know for sure. But it would be more important at this point.
Yeah.
Because you took, took it, made it very much more simplified.
The nice thing about this, the different sized trees and everything else, too, it gives it more natural look, it doesn't look like it's manufactured right out of the box, so some bigger ones, smaller ones, and everything else, it just kind of looks like, I mean, like it's been there for a while already. I know it's been there for a while already.
Regarding the parking, Fred, I don't know if you can speak to this, but, I mean, if they don't need that much parking and pavement, is that something staff could work with them on in the future to, you know, either cut that in half, if that's appropriate, and, you know, create some landscaping there? It seems, if it's not needed and never going to be used, why would we add 12 or 15 parking spaces that aren't needed?
Throughout the discussion process, there was still this issue of whether or not it could be converted back to flex space. And so that issue, you know, we really didn't dig into that, in terms of whether or not we really needed all the parking. That's still a possibility, but it's, well, we'll all admit that it's remote, so we left it.
But that could also be converted back, too, if you really.
Yeah, if you go landscaping, if you don't, you know, if you just landscape it, tear that back out, you're still going to have the same sloping to the same elevation, almost.
Just wanted to say that we would be completely open to discussing what to do with that, if we could do it through an administrative amendment. I mean, it would make all the sense in the world for us, and the kind of approach is thinking that if our proposed changes were accepted, that that could potentially be something we could work on with staff without the need to go to a public hearing.
We could include that in our recommendation.
Yeah, we could include it in the FDP recommendation, right? As something to direct staff to do, right? So.
That's kind of what drove my original question, because I'm just having the idea of paving grounds.
There's already a lot of impervious surface in the project, but with the roof and the drivelines and everything ready, so if you can move that. It's not, and I doubt the applicant would be opposed to reducing cost for paving, all that, so. Okay? Other questions?
So we're still okay with that paving just going up to the entry? Is that what we agreed on? It's been such a long time since the last time I. Yeah, partial street.
That's what was approved.
That was what was approved, yeah. Other questions?
I don't recall in which phase of the plans we discussed the lighting, but to ensure that the plan includes lighting, particularly on the south and west elevations, if not all of them, that diverts anything from being outwardly scattered.
We're using exactly the same lighting plan, same. We're using the same light fixtures, light pole locations, wall packs, whatever it is on there. We have not changed any of that, so the photometrics remain exactly the same.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember.
I know we had a fairly lengthy discussion about this during that.
Because it was supposed to, you know, very much be pointing down and towards your walls.
Right, the low cutoff and everything else, you know, white spill beyond the property lines and things like that.
We approved their light plan and their fixtures.
And I also, a couple points, I believe there was actually a cutoff point to where the lights had to go out, that we agreed to, and I don't remember exactly where it was. I almost forgot one of the most significant changes in this whole project is the phasing. So one of our best-selling points. The initial intent was to build half of, the phase one would have consisted of the north half of building one, building two. Phase two would have consisted of the south portion of building one and all of building three. With the proposed changes, this will enable us to build the entire project all at once, which we think is a win-win for everyone, especially the neighbors, so that they don't have to look at a partially finished product.
Any other questions? Okay, I'd like to open this up to the audience who wish to make comment on the subject. Please come forward, state your name, and we'll have time to.
My name is Jay Slater, I live at 7482 Marshall Road, which is actually on the north side of this proposed project. I guess a couple of comments, with the elimination or potential elimination of the flex space, it appeared, and I'm not sure, but the signage is on the north side of this building. Maybe if there's not flex space, there wouldn't be a need for signage. I'd certainly be interested in that. And the other comment I've got is that there's nice trees, you know, tall trees, evergreens around the west, in the south side, and maybe even the east side, but not the north side. So my vantage point of this property is going to be from the north, looking down on this, so that, you know, if the landscaping plan, I realize, has been approved, but if it included bigger trees as opposed to shrubs along the north side, that would be a plus for it.
Anyone else want to come forward?
Good evening, my name is Richard Lopez, 4450 Arapahoe in Boulder. I'm a city planner and attorney. My client, Evergreen, asked me to take a look at this proposed amendment with two key concerns. One is the uses, and the other is the road. This development was obviously approved, there was a flex space component. Going over your, I think it's your comprehensive plan, the photo of that or the diagram outside the door there, this area was envisioned at one time as 100% office. And I would suspect that flex space office component of this was something that was attractive, allowed it to be, in a sense, in compliance with your plans. With the removal of that, it becomes really just a plain storage facility, and that is a concern. The second concern is the roadway at the north park. Looking at your code, 16-17-38, it talks about extending roadways to meet up with future roadways, asking a developer to, a property owner, to construct that road either to the next point, or at least the length of their property, so that the next property owner can add onto it. And over time, you'll have a roadway system that will connect. In this instance, you're getting 140 feet, but in fact, it makes probably a little more sense to build, at least to the end of the property. That in turn enhances and increases the desirability of adjoining properties to develop. So I think your statute, in a sense, anticipates that and calls for that. And talking with Mr. Fox, I know there's a roadway from the residential development just to the south. And there is a road that's stubbed up to the north part of the property. So the plans, some plans somewhere envision a connection. And I think that your policies and your code ask you to take a look at that and make those provisions. Those are the two real comments. I'm quite sympathetic with the applicant. I've had projects ranging from $40,000 to $4.2 million that went south after October of 2008. So I know you have to make some adjustments, but I think keeping the uses, which you envisioned for the comprehensive plan for the future, is really important. Move away from that, things aren't going to change, as Mr. Fox said. Once those offices are done, they're not going to go back in, they're going to have exactly what you're saying. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else want to come forward and would like to speak to any issues brought up by the comments you heard?
Yeah, I don't, I'm not going to say anything about the road improvement, because, you know, we've been down that road. In terms of the flex space, it's extremely difficult to develop it at a later time, for all the reasons Fred mentioned. I do not believe that, and if the attorney can comment on the comprehensive plan specifying that this area must, requires office space, I'd be interested in it, but I do not recall that. And to build something that, you know, at this point in time, just for which there's no market demand, makes no sense for us.
Okay. Anyone else have anything they want to add right now, before I close the public hearing, and then have discussion? Okay, all right, thanks. We will close the public hearing and open up for discussion with the planning commission. Anyone, anyone?
Well, I think it's a viable solution on the changes on the elevations. It certainly has simplified the look of the project. The glass is kind of fuzzier right now, looked like more reflective glass in the past generations we saw. I'd be a little more curious on that. But certainly taking the one hip roof cupola thing off, took some dollars out of the project, savings for the owner.
And not necessarily for the better?
Maybe not always.
In my opinion.
I'm just pointing it out. But, you know, I think they've come up with another option. And I certainly think landscaping is going to become more and more apparent as an important element to this job. Certainly think the north elevation has some small little shrubs on it. That's my comment.
Yourself?
They're looking at me. I don't know if this is the portion where we would discuss similar to other, whether we want to call this infill or whatever development, but if there's a way to discuss the transportation of materials flow that would be coming to the site, right now, if these large rumbling trucks would be coming up Sycamore and going right where the parks and kids and people are versus going on down and making sure they divert to Marshall, stay on Marshall Road and come over?
I think, and I think we did have this conversation back then, and we closed the public hearing, so now you can't actually speak, so. But, yes, you can nod, yes. But I think we were fairly specific, had a conversation about access off of Marshall Road and onto 76th for most of the construction access, as opposed to coming up Sycamore or Coal Creek or something.
It's getting more and more congested as that park gets more used, and then the impact it would have the residents in the northeast sector of Sagamore, already put up with a lot of the 18-wheeler trucks that service the stores. And so I don't know how we put any kind of stipulation that says, you know, please divert trucks to stay on Marshall Road and come across 76th from Marshall.
I don't know if we stipulated that specifically, but I know we. I think it's good neighbors for, on the construction side, that would certainly be.
I think you could add that maybe to the recommendation of the commission, if you like. Construction traffic is Marshall Road.
Limit construction traffic to.
Marshall Road and 76th. We did talk about it. We did talk about it.
I think Remington was more, they came up with that plan.
Yeah. Well, that was when they were talking about hogging all the dirt in there.
Right.
And that was going to be a requirement, but.
But even otherwise, it's going to be pretty tough navigating Sycamore and the impacts that there will be and the difficulties for us to come out of our neighborhood with big trucks also competing in that small intersection. So if that can be a stipulation, that's important.
Just a legal question. Where, so you had mentioned that, you know, we can't change what's already been approved. But can we add things like that? I mean, where is that line as to?
Well, I would, I guess I would disagree about the color. I mean, they're coming forth with a color change, and I think we have every right to comment on the color.
Yeah.
That's up, yeah, I mean, that's up for approval.
Right, I think what I was trying to point out was that a blue color has already been approved, and it sounded like what the commissioner was asking for was, don't use blue. Use something more natural.
I think she was absolutely suggesting that, there's no doubt about it.
So that's where that comment was coming from. This, you know, you can throw out conditions, and if they don't want to move forward with the amendments, they can move forward with what's been originally approved. So I guess it's a weighing on the commission's part of what do you want out of this project? You can't come back and rework the entire project, because they're only asking for specific amendments, and you're here to recommend approval of those specific amendments. But if the applicant is willing, and it sounds like you've already had discussions previously about construction routes without actually mandating a specific construction route, and it was understood by the applicant what the town's desire was with respect to that, but, you know, I would rather not see conditions that, excuse me, are unrelated to the actual requested amendments.
And I guess back to that, though, to help us with our discussion, at one point, we had asked for the minutes from the meetings that, to be included. Did we include them in this?
No.
Yeah, I didn't see them. You looked at me like maybe you had, and I'm like, we did! But minutes of the, like, the previous approval, because it helps refresh our memory about the things that were discussed. And so it's helpful, just a little note there for you. Yeah, yeah, thanks. Just a couple of comments that I will make. I mean, about the, I'm looking at the blue, because we're talking about the blue. And the color that, if I'm looking at your corporate document, which I think is this one, and I'm assuming that you're talking about trying to match the corporate color, and I'm not a big fan of that particular shade, I suppose, in terms of on the metal and the roof panels and that kind of stuff, as a little too, one too blue. But, you know, it's my opinion.
And I like the gray-blue. I like the gray-blue that's on that.
This gray-blue better.
The new one.
Yeah, yeah. But if it was going to be more of a, I don't know what you want to call it, a bright blue or something, I would be less enthusiastic about it. The gray-blue, I'm with you.
It can blend.
Yeah, yeah.
With certain sunlight, but that.
But that brighter blue, I think, and I think that's your concern as well, right?
Particularly on the elevation that faces homes.
So that was one item. The, I know, you didn't render the signage, and I'm sure we had a conversation about it. I know the intent was to, it was facing 36, and there was supposed to be exposure on 36, on the signage. Seems obvious, you didn't render it, and I don't really remember, but I know to the, to the comment that was made by the citizen, that obviously there's some concern there on that. And I don't recall what was approved before, but I just want to make note of it that, that was, you know, there was conversation in the earlier approval that that was going to be a sign.
In our, can I say, ask something or say something?
Sure.
In our conversations with the applicant, I had made a note on the drawings that they show a fair amount of sign bands on the north elevation. I don't have a problem with putting them on the different buildings, but they need to meet the requirements of the land use code in terms of wall signs. The total square footage of all those bands is in excess of what would, is, to be honest with you, is what is in the code. But I wanted them to put that note on the drawings. I didn't see it, so I was going to ask the commission to put that in there or discuss it.
Just to make sure that the sign code, that they meet the requirements of the design code.
The total square footage requirements of the sign code. And you're right, we had a little bit more, when we were thinking about the flex space, there would be different signs up there for the tenants. That was a whole, one of the ideas of it, so we kind of let it go. This, though, is different now with just the storage facility, and so I feel they need to comply. need to comply with the code, which is a little bit different than what we had kind of approved with the original approval for signs.
And my other comment was related to the north elevation, which is the removal of the architectural element on building three, and of which I'm not a fan. It is the most important elevation from the visibility of 36, and, you know, whether the scale of it is right or not, I'm not really want to make that architectural judgment, but to have it disappear completely, to me, is a problem. I think it's the most important elevation that faces 36, and I don't like that it went away, so.
I agree. I think that's the only thing I have a problem with, is the removal of that feature. As far as anything else goes, I think, you know, you've done a good job with your materials and with blending and making it attractive, but keeping it neutral and toning it down. So I think that the removal of that roof, but I know I'm kind of a balanced guy, I like to see things in balance, and feels out of balance now on that north elevation, and it is an important elevation to have it be attractive.
Well, I was looking, I was looking back at it on the elevation you were showing of the previous, on the approved FDP, and I liked it, I still liked it, so.
And then the only other thing is removal of that flex space. I'd like to see more landscaping in there and less asphalt than that curb and all that to reduce the parking spots and kind of dress that down as far as the, it's kind of a bare look over there, and that's in another important location. And if we could dress that down a little bit by removing some parking spots, I'm all for it.
That will probably diminish the whole idea of any flex space possibilities, really.
I mean, we've looked at this, so many projects for this piece of land, probably the piece of land I've seen the most in my many, many years of being here, so I'm happy to see something moving forward. And we've shot down a lot of other uses for this property that were probably closer to meeting, you know, some of the original intended uses. But, you know, I think this, I think this project works.
Anyone else? Comments?
No, I like the original goal on the roof, too. I think it breaks it up, otherwise it's just this swath of flat roof. So if you could reconsider that, it would be appreciated.
Well, we may just ask them to. Is that it? On comments? Okay. I guess, you know, it's time for some sort of decision. Do we want to try to make a list of proposed recommendations and we can straw vote them or something?
Straw vote a couple.
Yeah, and see what you, what you think, what y'all think, so.
We have the, we have the parking.
Yeah.
The addition of the, what is that? The third building, metal roof on the northwest building three roof.
The color.
What about some trees to the north side addition, some trees instead of just shrubs?
That's, you're just, you're working with just a band of landscaping area, though. Because where would the trees go out? Put them, you can't put that many big trees right in the, next to the curve when the street goes through. Where they have all those shrub lines. And okay, if you can't put a bunch of big trees up there, you just don't have the room. And then you can't put them on the interior, and you just have banded landscaping.
I do recall that, you know, we also wanted to continue the viability of the project by allowing that visibility off 36.
Right. And trees are not part of their requested change, some of your, I think we're kind of venturing down that, let's put other requirements that there, it's not relevant to what they're asking. These other two, you know, the roof, they're asking to change that. Parking is related to the flex space, but I don't see what trees have to do with, I mean, that's been approved.
Right.
Ephes medallions? The foam medallions, as opposed to painting them on there? Right?
Are they, well, is it integral ephes on the, well, you can nod. Integral ephes on the medallions or are painted, okay? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
As opposed to painting something?
You're okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Feed that.
George.
Oh, it's George. Terry Herring?
Can you hear me now?
So what, with the color, what, I'm not sure what is up for discussion or change or, I mean, do they have flexibility in it? I mean, do they have a specific pantone color approved today and they're requesting a change to a new pantone color and therefore we can either say yes or no? Or does it allow us, I mean, what, I mean, what specifically can we do?
Well, they're proposing from the old board to the new board some changes to the colors, all right? And they represented that the blue on the old board isn't quite reflective of what color they were going to come up with. They also stated that they're not quite sure about the color they're showing here as being quite accurate either.
A manufacturer standard color or something, right?
Right. So to me, you've said something on the order of a more of a gray, you know, if that's an approved condition, that they tend towards the gray-blue rather than the bright-blue.
But we don't even know if it's a bright blue, because we don't know the exact color anyway at this point.
Well, that's an example of a bright blue, but that's not what it's going to be, so that one's out.
That's the old one.
That's the old one.
That's the old one there. And I guess my feeling is, is if it's a corporate color, it's a corporate color, and asking to change a corporate color doesn't seem right. I mean, that seems inappropriate, but that's just my feeling. I mean, maybe, you know, and then we're starting to get in, where do they put that color? And that's, is that up for grabs?
Well, Target didn't put red roof on the marketplace, they got a green roof because that's what the marketplace...
Well, true, yeah, and we did that with IHOP. We pushed, we pushed the color of the awnings because even though it wasn't their corporate color, yeah, Wild Wings, we took away the black and yellow.
We have a long and checkered history of this.
Yes, I'm remembering, I'm remembering, yeah.
Well, let me ask a question. As opposed to the new concept of Ephes colors, stone, we changed the proportions of all that on those elevations from the original deal. So is there a minimum requirement in Superior of face square footage?
Of any particular material?
Yeah, stone, no. Well, the answer is no. Okay. Answer's that. Just variety.
Okay, so we talked about the roof, reduction in parking, the color, not, well, we could talk about trees, I guess, but I'm not sure that we can, so.
Right.
But, well, we can straw vote if there's really anything to talk about, but I think we're, well, we'll see. And then, was there something? Oh, you talked about the construction traffic route, right?
Talked about...
The what?
The sign note.
Oh, right.
Yeah, sign note.
Okay. So let's go real quick through these. So on the reduction of the parking, do you think that that should be something that we should allow them to consider with staff? Do you think that's a good idea? So, say, go ahead and, yeah, okay, all right, so that would be one potential recommendation for keeping the roof on building three.
Well, I'd call it the tower element.
The tower element on building three. Do you have an opinion on that, whether that should stay or not?
I don't have a problem with any of these.
Two, three.
I think it looks odd to change.
Five. Yeah, yeah, okay. The roof color, is that, are you okay with staff approving a roof color with them to, or something? I mean, you...
I'm okay with a corporate color. With corporate, we'll pick them up on.
But does that need to extend to doors?
It would be, it would match, it would be the blue. I mean, it wouldn't have to be, it would have to match. So, I mean, I think the options would be that they go to, you know, that they match some sort of custom color, right, on all the surfaces of some sort, right? Which can be done if you really want it. But, or they pick from the manufacturer's standard colors of, somewhere or another, they got to match a roof element and a garage door element, and they're probably two different manufacturers anyway, so one of them they're going to have to match no matter what, I would think, so.
So, tell me again, so if a roof is a certain color, then would...
It's not made by, it's not painted by the same guy that's doing, that produces the garage door, so if you're going to match it, you've got to match it with one or the other, right?
I guess I'm asking why we need blue doors? If you want, the most visual element is the roof piece, and if you want that to be the corporate blue because that's, you know, your color's, that's great. I'm not sure down at the ground level where the doors are, if we need to match that color.
But they've not requested any color change at all.
Well, I think they're trying to bring synergy to that, to those design elements, so they, yeah.
Corporate colors and keep, not throwing in another color.
I guess the question is, do we want to try to give them some direction about, hey, shade of blue, or are we okay with either them coming forth to staff?
I'm okay with them coming to staff. Staff knows how we...
It's not, we don't even know if it's that color, so, the blue that they're proposing.
I guess I just wonder the consistency or lack thereof that there seems to be. Or maybe the whole idea is that it's not part of marketplace and therefore we view it differently and allow colors that we wouldn't allow in the marketplace?
Well, and it's not part of the marketplace, so...
Okay, so maybe that's, okay.
They're pulling certain design elements from the marketplace, I think, but it's not, they're not obligated to anything in the marketplace.
I think we were also pulling away from that a little bit. I mean, we talked about Ethan Allen bringing in their blue, not making them stick with the green. I think we started to veer away from making everybody lose their corporate identity and match this to the marketplace colors, so.
Okay, just want to understand.
So what's, what are we asking? Are we asking? To allow them to pick their, the color that they want submitted staff...
So just for clarification, they've requested a roof color change, but...
Yeah.
No.
No, that's not true.
But isn't that the roof? No, but that roof, that blue is the blue.
On the doors and the...
That was, that was the blue that was approved in the FDP. Fred?
So they're requesting a color change to their corporate color.
There's something closer to their corporate color.
So our options are, they can just go...
We could match the blue that they put on their little sample.
They have the right to go forward with their approved color.
Yes.
We can request, or we can say no to a change to their corporate color if we think it's too bright, but we don't even know what it looks like yet because they're not sure that that's right. Or what?
You can say, if it matches that, we're okay or close to it, you know, I mean...
Or we can say, we like to have a more subtle color, but...
I think they opened the door for the color.
They opened the door, they opened the door for the color change, so, okay, so those are our options.
And we don't get to say red, I don't think.
No.
Well, we can say it, but they don't have to. They can just leave it the way it is, but, or we can just let, we can say it's okay for staff to work that out if we're not terribly concerned about it. Are those kind of our options?
Yeah.
All right. I'd be in favor of letting staff...
Why don't you throw staff out as a straw vote?
Okay, so staff? Let them work the staff. Okay, all right. Thank you. The construction signage, to try to direct, recommend that they direct traffic away from the original town and away from, from the Sycamore, coming up Sycamore.
I got the impression from head nods it'd be, have a call to that, so, I think, so I would think it's reasonable to see if we can add that if it's not already in there. I do, I thought we talked about it, too, but...
We did talk about it, but I don't see it in, like, the approval.
Is that something we have to put in there to make it so?
Sometimes we do, and sometimes we, you know, get an agreement at the meeting and it kind of, we go from there and then we know if they aren't going to, they don't do it on a, one kind of a project where we've been a little bit more, in other words, we haven't formally set the route. Now, with Remington Homes, we did because there was a very big concern about all the hauling they were going to be doing, so that was a little bit more formal. That was a condition of approval, I believe, for them, but not for this one.
I know it's outside of the scope, I think, and we're throwing it in the recommendation.
I'll, everyone in favor of throwing it in the recommendation?
Yeah.
Okay. Done, all right?
The sign?
Oh, and the sign recommending that they, that we had the note about that, following the sign code.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Anything else on the glass? Do we need to address that?
On the glass?
It's currently called for low E glass. It's going to be pretty clear.
If it's on, if that's what's on the drawings and that's what they're going to provide.
Yeah.
Do we, we need to discuss it, so I think it's sort of moving at this point, right?
Change.
It's not their request. They're not requesting a change in the glass, the glass is already been approved.
Right. Okay. So, somebody want to make a motion here? Do you want to do it? I've got, if you could read my scribble.
Right. Resolution of the Planning Commission, Town Superior, recommending approval of an amendment to the final development plan for the Guardian Storage Development in case number FDP 2012-1.
With the following condition?
With the following conditions. Reduction of parking lot, parking spaces in front of the former flex space.
To be reviewed with staff?
To be reviewed with staff. Roof on, roof on building three.
The tower structure.
The tower structure. Recommend that that be put back in as per original approval. Color, we're...
Recommend to staff.
Recommend that staff work with the developer to decide on the color of the blue roof and blue doors.
The construction traffic.
And that construction traffic be directed to Marshall Road and away from Sycamore.
And the last thing is the signage.
And the signage of the project meet Town Superior code.
Got all that?
Yes.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Commissioner Cool on a second. That was Commissioner Prestasator, right?
Yes.
And a second, like Commissioner Cool, did you?
I have a question. We have a discussion, I have a question.
Oh, okay, all right, okay. Motion and a second. Discussion on the motion.
I had a question about the wording of the resolution. It says recommending approval of the amendment. I don't think the planning commission gives approval. I think they recommend to the board.
I thought that's a recommending approval, so you're recommending to the board approval.
Can we say to the board, trustee?
Sure.
Okay, I think makes a little bit clearer. Doesn't say that the planning commission is saying to the board.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
Any other discussion on the motion? Anyone? Anyone? Okay. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. That's your, your analysis. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Moving on to item six, presentation on the 88th Street pedestrian improvements. Thank you. Moving on to item six, presentation on the 88th Street pedestrian improvements. You ready? Alex, ready when you are.
All right, well. Alex Aronello, with LSC Transportation Consultants, Towns Traffic Consultant. And you'll be seeing more of me, I've accepted a position as Public Works Superintendent for the Town Superior.
Congratulations.
So, I'll be here, seeing a lot more of you.
Can you, I, I missed that, I didn't hear you.
I will be starting as Public Works Superintendent for the town.
Oh, okay.
Some of these capital projects, and I'll make sure they keep the construction office of...
There couldn't be anybody more qualified.
Not sure about that. While we're here tonight, I think we had a ordinance or a resolution at one point where we would take projects that the town was undertaking in terms of improvement projects to the Planning Commission and get your approval, make sure there's any planning issues. I don't know if there's a formal thing that you're gonna...
Capital improvement projects?
Right. So, this is a project that we're undertaking as a result of some requests from the neighbors out, out there, and we heard one of them tonight about how to cross 88th Street. So, we're investigating, upgrading the visibility of the pedestrian crossing. So, that's what we're here tonight. And this issue in terms of crossing arterials is gonna also come back on an issue on the CASD near the bridge. So, you'll be seeing, some of the things that you'll see tonight and how you address it will be also applied to that crossing as well. So, let's put your lights there.
Okay, sure.
So, just to, to set the stage of where we, where we're at on this, here's Rock Creek Parkway with 88th coming at the roundabout. 88th goes across just 36 and connects up to Dillon Road and Lewisville. This is the Conical Phillips site that's undeveloped and soon to, hopefully, at some point will come on board. Monarch High School and Monarch Middle School are just up here, and the Amistad Campus is over there. So, the issue we have is that we have students from the Rock Creek area, and I don't know what the attendance boundaries are, but we have students that are coming from Rock Creek, wanting to cross 88th, go across the bridge. And the problem is that the, there's not a sidewalk on the west side and on the Lewisville side. So, it's on the east side, so they need to cross 88th to get to the school. So, that's one issue. The other issue that came up with the...
Shadow.
Shamrock?
Shamrock.
Is that where it is?
Shamrock. One of the issues we have is that we don't have a sidewalk along the east side of 88th. So, actually, what they're doing is crossing across 88th here, coming up this sidewalk and crossing back. So, it's, we also looked at the possibility of putting a sidewalk along 88th that's probably down the road, because we don't have a right-of-way to do that. And when this property develops, we'll require that. So, we did look at that, and that may be something we come forward with, if we can get, you know, the right-of-way acquired at some point to make that.
How far does the sidewalk go north across the highway? On the west side?
It goes all the way up to, whatever, Campus Drive, whatever, up to Monarch.
On the west side?
On the west side. On the east side.
East side.
Yeah, how far does it go on the west side?
On the west side, it just goes across the bridge.
It's a bridge.
Just to the bridge and stops?
Yeah, across the bridge.
Across the bridge, right.
And then it stops. So, we have, here's the existing crossing, and I'll show you some pictures of it, of the sign now, what I wanted to point out. So, we have a trail system coming up from, from this neighborhood and a trail system coming up from the neighborhood. They also have a trail system up, up north of that. So, they kind of all converge into this, this crossing. We do have some, some concerns, just to go back from residents, why don't you just put something alight at the crossing at Weldonia? And the issues with that is that those trails, you know, you know, aren't, you'd have to come back and cross at Weldonia and then go back up. So, that's out of the way. So, we have an issue at Weldonia, we have an issue here that at some point we have to address. So, there's the crossing, again, you can see the sidewalk coming up.
Excuse me, at, down further, though, the sidewalk does come all the way up to this point, right? Oh, yeah, that's what you showed. Okay.
Yeah, on the west side.
On the west side.
Yes. So, here's some of the traffic control we have. This is southbound, and we have an advanced pedestrian crossing sign. We have the crossing here. Let me just go back. You're gonna ask whether we have enough site distance, okay, if we put anything to cross. And the site distance, you can really, you can see to the top of the bridge, okay? And much get, get across, cars start dropping off. So, there's about 750 feet from that crossing to the top of the bridge. So, how it'll come into play, is we get into, we're gonna stop traffic and are they gonna see and so... So, we have an attached walk that comes across the bridge, and then it goes to a detached walk. I want to point out the power lines here, and that's gonna be an issue on how we design, if we get to traffic signals and so forth, and whether they're gonna interfere. So, we have that issue to resolve as we go forward. This is looking northbound. You can see the unapproved nature of the 88th on this side, again, the pedestrian crossing sign in advance. And you can see the site, site distance issue of, of across the bridge. It looks closer, but there's 750 feet stopping site distance at 35 miles an hour is about 250 to 300 feet. So, you're planning to stop, stopping site distance, but if you're, if we start having queues that are, you know, up, up the hill, then you may have tons of issues. And I've analyzed that, and I'll provide the results. This is the issue, you know, they installed this, there's a push button activated, we have little flashes around the sign, and you can't, can't see them. Really, they're probably, the older style, it really doesn't get your attention. So, you push the button, and you, you think you're getting people's attention, but you, you really aren't getting it. So, that's the whole purpose of why we're here, to upgrade that, that's something that is more visible.
We had the wrong public works director. It's a superintendent, sorry.
Here's some of the other traffic control. We do have radar, sign, and flash at your speed. Okay, some traffic data. 88th carries about 8,100 vehicles per day. That's 40, well, 4,000 each direction. But, in the AM period, when Monarch is starting, there's 700 vehicles in an hour northbound, and one hour, 300 vehicles southbound. I, I did pull out this afternoon, the Conical Phillips traffic study, to see how that's gonna go up. And they're predicting that the eight, the 700 would go to 1,000 vehicles per hour, and the 300 would go to 400 vehicles per hour. So, we're gonna go from 1,000 vehicles in both directions to 1,400 during this peak hour.
And is it reversed in the afternoon?
Yes, but not as significant, because, you know, people are going to school, dropping off their kids, and going to work. In the afternoon, you get out, let out in the mid-afternoon. So, so, when school gets out, you're not coinciding with the, the commuter peak hour. So, the school, the school start time coincides with the commuter peak hour, so that's why it's so high in the morning, not quite as high as in the evening.
How many pedestrian trips are we talking about? Okay, well, I'm gonna get to that.
All right, you get to that, sorry. So, speeds, we did some speed counts last year, and the posted speed is 35 miles an hour. Eighty-fifth percentile speed that traffic engineers use, that's kind of the critical speed that we use to post speed limits and determine what speed limits you're posting. Southbound, according to now, it's 39 miles an hour. You think it would be faster, because you're coming down the hill, but it's, it's not as fast as going, going up the hill, going up the bridge, 43 miles an hour.
Is our regular sign, do you think?
But, could be, yeah, because you're...
Well, you're more conscious of it if you do it. You know you're going downhill, and you're gonna pick up speed, so...
Oh, you see that thing flashing?
Yes.
Oh, you do, it does.
It works.
So, maybe effective, yeah.
All right, so, we did count pedestrian crossings during the, it was in early January, right after school started, and we only counted eight pedestrian crossings in the morning, 12 in the evening. So, it's fairly a low crossing, pedestrian crossing place, that was the volumes. Now, again, this is in the winter.
Winter, yeah.
And it's also, could be perceived as dangerous, you know, that the, maybe parents don't want them, their kids to cross, because they perceive there's too much traffic. So, take that into account, because that's gonna play into some of the warrant criteria in the presentation. The crossing time to go across 24 feet of pavement, normal crossing speed is about four mi, four feet per second. So, it takes about six seconds for a pedestrian to cross the 24 feet of the travel lanes. If you take that 1,000 cars an hour and divide it by 3,600 seconds, that's one car every 3.6 seconds. So, it's pretty hard to scamper across there when, when, that's just the average one. So, there are bunches and stuff, and there's gaps. But, there, there aren't a lot of gaps for pedestrians to get across without help. In ITE, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, they've published some guidelines on pedestrian treatments at great crossings like this. These are some of the things that they've kind of surveyed and tried to evaluate. Do these things work? And there's things like flags. You put a flag on each side, you hold the flag out, you know. A lot of these things that they've tried. We felt that there were four that you could look at. You know, one would be flashing beacons, we're gonna talk about that. Automated detection, which, we have a push button right now. Refuge Islands, we're gonna look at that. Raised crossings were asked for, but we felt that on our arterial, it's probably not appropriate to have a speed hump coming down that, that thing. So, those are the four we kind of considered, and threw out, and we have what our recommendations are gonna be. City of Boulder, if you've read the papers, they've just had an evaluation of pedestrian crossings and some of the things, I've read that article. But, they've, we're fortunate, but they've done a lot of work in this area, and they've tested a lot of things, and they've looked at accidents and a whole bunch. And they've developed criteria for the types of protection, things that you should implement based on traffic volumes, pedestrian volumes, speeds, and so forth. So, we're borrowing some of their things in terms of their criteria, because the national criteria, we never even consider doing anything at this crossing, because the pedestrian volumes are so low. So, one issue is the average daily traffic. Is it over 1,500 vehicles per day? It's 8,000, so that's yes. Here is, is where we could get a warrant, is, is this a multi-use path crossing, okay? So, we have, you saw, we have two trails coming out. We have a place that they want to go, they want to go to the high school, so we have an actual place that they want to cross. And there isn't anything else to help them cross within, you know, half a mile in each, each direction. Do we have adequate site distance, is another key thing. We have the bridge there. Their criteria is you need to have eight times the speed limit, which is about a little over 240 feet or so. And we have 750 feet, so we meet that criteria. And they suggest a pedestrian line of 28 pedestrians per hour. So, we're kind of low on that. Again, is that because it's so unsafe, the people aren't using it, it wasn't in the winter? So, that's kind of, we're on the borderline of that.
If you've got a proven that they don't follow the speed limit, and they're going 45 miles an hour, you use that for your calculation? Or coming down the hill, is it really eight times 40, because that's...
Yeah, I mean, you could use that. I mean, you could use the eighty-fifth percentile, say, eight times the 43.
320 feet coming down the hill and lots coming up, but we have a longer site distance coming up.
Yeah, I mean, that's something that you would consider after. Okay, so, our, our recommendation is to install a pedestrian activated traffic signal and install advanced warning signs that flash when it's being, being activated. And these are some of the costs, and these are in a state of flux, so we get into, design, get more into the details of this, get your opinion, and move forward. I want to give you some, some of the things we've looked at to, to give you the background on our, our recommendation. So, this is the type of PED signal that we look at, and I chose this location. This is up by, in Table Mesa in Boulder. Again, it's just a, this is a two-lane roadway, so you have a PED head over the roadway. It gives a positive indicator that, that when it turns red, there's no doubt, you're supposed to stop. If you don't stop, you get a ticket.
Okay.
And, and as opposed to these flashing thing, things in Boulder, where, what do you do with this?
If it's, it'll be there, can you go?
Right. And, and it's one of my problems with those, is that there are high-volume roadways, and, and, you know, what do you, what do you, the flashings, if there's someone there, if there's not someone there, do we go through? And then, you know, who has a right-of-way? So, there's those issues, and Boulder's, you know, been experimenting with them, and I've always been hesitant. I drive through a couple every day, because I live in Boulder, I use 28th Street. I go by these, and I just shake my head, so, that's one of the reasons we were...
I would point out that, in my experience, that I know of a crossing very down an arterial, sometimes people will push the button, but they'll go because there's a break in the traffic. And I think it's key that you have a red light, because even though there's nobody standing there, they have to stop, because it's been cycled. And I don't think there's anything wrong with that, even though they did jump across and run across on what is, would be for the PED, a red light.
Right.
So, I, I think it's, I think you're right. I mean, that whole business of flashing lights, you get confused, and people will gun it, because it's a yellow light instead of, and that guy might just be stepping out at, at that time.
So, it was one of our considerations in doing this. Again, the national standards in terms of a PED crossing light like this, you'd have to have like 100 pedestrians an hour, okay? So, what's underneath that, City of Boulder's criteria is saying, like, if you have 20, you can go to an upgraded protection of, of crossings, because they're really looking to favor pedestrians, can pedestrians more of a, of a shake with vehicles. So, they're, they're willing to stop the traffic and allow pedestrians to cross, and so they have lower, lower thresholds for their pedestrian lines. So, this, I also pointed this out, because this is a, a key intersection similar to what we have, and that, we go back to the area. This is, this roadway was constructed as a maintenance roadway to, I think, maintain its attention bond. And I don't know, what other function is there for...
Well, the other function was, historically, there was a house up by the turnpike, and this was their driveway.
This was the driveway?
Yeah.
It used to be the, it used to be the driveway for the house that was there.
That's correct.
Is that, is that what it was? Can we close with that?
Yeah, it's gone. The house, obviously, is gone.
Also, the race car.
So, you know, is this an intersection or not? So, and we've looked at this as being access to the back end, to the town center. And that was, we wanted to design this as a very low volume, maybe a back way of getting, getting out, but that's certainly gonna come back.
Yeah, that's a problem yet to solve, Alex. You can have at it.
So...
Does that, does that really affect anything, though, the way it is right now? Does that really affect what you're talking about?
No, no, but, but we set it up so that we can, we can...
Someday, it did become an access road or something?
Right, but, we can get the, I think, we've designed it now where the stop bar is, it's not gonna be right in the middle of the drive, it's gonna be up on, right at the end of the bridge. So, it's gonna be, you know, probably 40 feet from the crossing, but it's gonna be on the other side of the drive, so that it doesn't look like it's right in the middle of this driveway. So, that was an issue, and that'll come up in these...
Hey, I was just wondering if you could just stripe that road, all the way down, and, I mean, for right now. Then you could put the stripe bar right, or the stop...
I'll put that, I'll put that on my list if you're able to. Okay, so, the other option we considered were these rectangular rapid flashing beacons, and you've seen a bunch of them around Boulder, and it's not an option. They have this, this lights here, and when they flash, they get your attention, especially at night. I mean, you know, something's there, it's up, it's, it grabs your attention. But, they mostly use those on multi-lane roads, so this, it's mostly the two lanes in each direction with a median of some sort. And so, you cross to the, to the center of Refuge Island. Don't do a lot of them, I think...
It's probably okay for pedestrians, but they're terrible for drivers, right?
Well, they... It's terrible for drivers?
Yeah. Yeah. 'Cause if you're the guy in front, you stop, you may get reded.
Yeah, well, yeah, right, and they've had a lot of.
Or something that.
Although the city, the city claims in their recent article that these are safer than regular intersections, so. Here's one that I drive through each, each day. This is on twenty-eighth street, just, this is Iris up here. And, uh, this is going from bus stop, you know, crossing to the bus stops. And what the city's done is they put this landscaping, so you can't, you know, you, you can't see the pedestrians over here. And this is, this is the one where they had a kid riding through here and got hit. So there, there's some real issues with these, and, and I'm, I'm cautious about implementing here and, and, but I thought we'd at least evaluate. So this is one design I came up with in terms of, could we do this? And could we put a pedestrian refuge here and, you know, put the signs on both sides, uh, and provide, you know, a refuge here? So instead of crossing twenty-four feet, they cross twelve feet at a time, so. Uh, I drew that up, and what we have to do is we have to steal, uh, pavement from the shoulders, bike lanes on the bridge. And we don't have a whole lot of room here. I mean, you could sneak it in, but we do have issues of making all that work. So that, we did come up with that as, as an option, in case you wanted to consider that.
Does that access traffic comming too?
There, yeah, the islands do, because it's something in the, in the roadway, you know, and people are, you know, grabs their attention, and, and that's the type of thing I like to use for traffic comming. Like, you put something, an obstacle in the, in the roadway, you sign it, you know, properly, and, and all of a sudden, you know, have a straight out there. You gotta, you gotta maneuver your, your.
Got their attention.
That's certainly an option, and, and, uh, I might have leaned towards that one, but, uh, we, we felt that they're all of a sudden, uh, we thought that pedestrian signaling was, was probably a lot better in terms of a positive reinforcement of it. The other thing we did, uh, look at was pedestrian, uh, underpass, where we would go up a little farther, where the, the bridge comes down, kind of in the bridge, the, you know, the, the area where you start to take off and use the elevation change on the bridge to put a pedestrian underpass here and then build the sidewalks connecting. And, uh, this is about a million dollars to, to do that. Um, so we kind of discarded that.
Half a million?
Hmm?
Half a million?
Million.
Millions.
And they may not walk up and use it. They may still stay on the surface and try to.
Right. The, the other thing I should point out is that, um, uh, part of the US thirty-six, uh, E I S improvements was bikeway along, uh, US thirty-six. And so it's, it's gonna be on the north side of the turnpike, uh, where McCaslin crosses McCaslin on the north side of the bridge, comes, comes down, goes under the turnpike at, uh, Coal Creek Underpass, where we have one. Comes up by the cemetery, and we're gonna use the cemetery. There's a obstacle over there that we're gonna actually replace, maybe. And, uh, and so it's gonna, then it's gonna go back on to the north side, and then it's gonna come down to eighty-eighth and go under, you know, use the eighty-eighth opening of the turnpike, 'cause it's wider than it needs to be right now, and go under the turnpike there. So, so one of the things I'm gonna look at is trying to, to make a, make some connections to eighty-eighth, to that, so we wouldn't have that in effect. But you'd have to go over the bridge and maybe circle around and, and use that if you wanted. So people probably won't do that. But you probably want some tie-in to get to the bikeway on, on, along the turnpike end. So, in effect, we may have it on the pass, but it may not be very easy to use for this particular purpose. So in, uh, in summary, we looked, we looked at a lot of other alternatives, but those are the ones we wanted to at least show you. And, uh, our recommendation was to work pedestrian activated traffic signal. We're still evaluating a span wire. A span wire installation is what we used to have at McCaslin, where we had the four poles and the lights going. The span wire is going across. Mast arm is more fitting than with the rest of our traffic signals, but it costs about twice, two or three times more. Um, we may have to, uh, what's happening, if you remember, the, uh, utility arm. So they have utility poles there. So if you think of a span wire, poles are up here, and it goes like this. Where mast arm is like this, and then it kind of curves over the roadway. So the pole could be shorter with a mast arm. So that may be the deciding factor between, between the choice rather than just the cost.
What's, what would, what would the cycle time be on that light, if you installed it?
We would need, uh, uh, actually, I have a simulation to show you if I could, to, uh, get it working. But it would probably be about, uh, ten to fifteen seconds. I know, ten seconds of, of green, and all you need to do is provide the walking time. Um, so it, it'll take six seconds to cross and then plus the.
So some pedestrian indicator too, that there's a walk, don't walk sign on each side of the road too, besides the traffic light?
Mm-hmm, right. And one of the things we'll probably be doing is, is part of this, since, uh, we're doing an upgrade to an intersection, we'll have to make sure everything meets ADA, current ADA standards, so that the pans and stuff may have to be replaced. We may, we may have to make sure we have the, the push buttons that need code and all that, so.
So, just a question too about, is there? Well, I'm just trying to ask this question, so.
Finish my thoughts there. We did evaluate, I looked at a forty-second cycle where, uh, when, when someone pressed the push button, uh, there'd be a little delay to, to do the traffic. But there would be a twenty-second, which is probably twenty-second green ti- red time, so for the pedestrians to cross. And I wanted to see what happens to that in terms of the traffic on eighty-eighth.
Right.
What are the queues that form with that? So it was overkill, and the maximum queue was, I think, two hundred sixty feet, okay? And that's the maximum queue, and the average queue is like forty feet. And that's during the AM, uh, peak hour, when all the traffic's going. So, uh.
Is forty feet three cars or four cars or something?
Four, uh, twenty feet is a car.
Twenty feet, that's two cars.
Yeah. Average queue would be two cars, but you could have as many as eight during that time when you had everybody on guard. So one of the, one of the, uh, comments we got, email that we got was from a Weldonia resident, that they felt that if we put the light here, it would screw up the traffic so bad on eighty-eighth that they could never get out. So I wanted to see, does that queue go back to Weldonia? The maximum queue goes back to two hundred sixty feet. I think we're all over seven hundred, seven hundred feet to Weldonia.
So is there a non-signalized option here that we haven't discussed? Like, I was thinking about, you know, South Boulder Road, uh, by Centaurus, and where during school hours, that road goes to twenty-five miles an hour. Could you create a school zone that was twenty-five miles an hour with your existing flashing light crossing or something? But during the school, those school hours, that's a school zone, and it's, it's.
So they're going slower?
They're going slower, but it might, but I, but I was listening to the gal who was talking about Shamrock, and she's saying, you know, people are coming off of the, the, the roundabout, and everybody's going thirty-five miles an hour right there, and it's hard to turn right or left or whatever. At least at those busy times, at least the traffic can slow down a little bit, into twenty-five miles an hour to get people through there. And then the traffic can stop for a pedestrian in the crosswalk, as opposed to, you know, because it's, they're only one twenty-five. They'll see the pedestrian, and then, you know, the lights will flash, and they can get across. Is that even an option in this scenario? I know we're a long way from the school, but.
You know, I don't, you know, yeah.
It's kind of a long way from the school.
It's a pretty long way from the school. And are you just gonna put it in this one area? So, I mean, it's a good suggestion. I can go back and evaluate it. My, my feeling is that it probably is not gonna be very effective in protecting the pedestrian, you know, in terms of.
Well, you, you go to twenty miles an hour and put some neck downs in, it, it, I mean, to where, 'cause, I mean, one of the things that, that's nice about those neck downs is it brings the pedestrian into the, they're in a protected zone, but they're, they're now, you know, cars are coming down here, and you've brought the pedestrian into their line of sight from the road, right?
Well, what I was suggesting was actually that you're changing the, the, the.
The speed limit.
The speed limit.
Right, yeah.
You're only changing it during certain times, uh, on school days or whatever, to allow for, in school, you know, to allow for those pedestrians to cross.
Well, and another consideration, this is, this is a residential area, and we don't treat it that way. When you come across from Losville, it is hard as hell to.
But you think there are a road.
To slow down, to, to even, even, you know, you're coming over that hill, you're doing forty, on average.
Everybody's coming over that bridge fifty miles an hour.
Right. And then they see the sign, and they slow down to thirty-nine, and Alex checks them, and that's where we got our thirty-nine. But you're right, you're doing fifty before they, before they hit that sign.
Absolutely.
And we have also seen that they're going faster coming up the hill, coming up to eighty-eight. We don't treat that, and I'm, I'm a, so, and I'm a huge proponent of narrowing streets. You've heard me talk about it many times. I see it in Boulder. You know, they took Broadway on a shh with those four lanes, and man, you don't wanna go more than twenty-five or thirty miles an hour. It's just not comfortable. We did it with Coal Creek, and, and it's amazing. People will, they, it is just too uncomfortable to drive faster than twenty-five on Coal Creek. It just slows people down when you neck them down like that. And we've not created, we've not made this, this section, which is truly residential, really a residential road. It's a, it's a thruway.
I mean, I think it is a thirty-five mile an hour road.
Yeah, just, uh, and I think that's.
And to get through there fast enough, on most times during the day, where you have this, this, you do have this safety period. I mean, we're trying to protect eight or twelve pedestrians, you know, and how much money are we gonna spend to do that? And, and still allow traffic to move freely through there, right? And that's why I was, I, I was just asking about school, school zone.
But I'm most responding to Susan's comment, Shamrock. I mean, so that, that, that stretches from, I mean, that's basically our, you know, yes, all the residents happen to be on.
But I think your problem is probably at the time, those peak times, 'cause of the school, you know, traffic in and out. And that's when, that's when you would have the slower speed to allow people to get off of Shamrock, maybe, I don't know.
Maybe, yeah.
I don't know if it works or not.
Before and after school time, so the traffic is on that road.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's when you would be slowing it down enough to allow people to do this, but.
I don't know, a lot of those drivers are kids. I don't know how much they're gonna look at that twenty-five mile an hour when they're, when they're a few minutes late.
Yeah, but, but, but the problem is the mom in front of him is going twenty-five, it's gonna slow him down, so, you know what I mean?
I mean, I've seen.
I don't want a hundred dollar ticket.
I don't, I don't, I don't like that circle, 'cause of the way they come around that corner. They come flying around that corner.
Oh, yeah.
I love that.
And if you're going, if you're coming down and then going out eighty-eight, they come up, they come up there to where you don't think they're gonna stop. And at the last second, they stop. And I, I keep thinking, okay, this one's gonna hit me. Every time I go around that circle, come down, I'm going to eighty-eight.
Yep, yeah.
They're coming up, and they, they don't stop. You know, I'd love to see, to slow them down there. I'd love to see a speed bump before you, you hit that, around that corner, because, because they don't, they, they, every other circle, I'm a big proponent of circles, but in that particular case, she's absolutely right, the way they come around that corner, transitioning from, from Rock Creek Parkway up and onto eighty-eighth.
And eighty-eighth, onto Rock Creek.
They come screaming around the corner.
That's.
Yeah, and, and the same thing too, going onto Rock Creek Parkway.
And, and the, the point at which they decide to stop to let you go, if you're already in the circle coming around, is so very like.
Okay, well, that's another one I'll have to work on.
Well, I think, I think it's, I think it's indicative of the whole problem of eighty-eighth. I, I mean, I do. I think they come screaming around that corner, and then they go screaming down the street. I mean, I think, I think there's just an issue with that whole section of street. They act like they're going on to, coming around that corner to go down a rural road rather than a residential street.
I drive it pretty regularly. Not every day necessarily, but pretty regularly. I know I like to get through, the fact that we can get through there at thirty-five miles an hour.
Yeah, I like the search.
And, no, I just mean the whole eighty-eighth street stretch. And so, um, to, 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 to neck it down or something, sort of semi-permanently, I don't know if I love that idea, but, um, but I do think that if we can improve this traffic, this pedestrian crossing, and so, some ways to do that, I'm all for that. But I, I love keeping that road thirty-five, I think, is, 'cause it's a, it's longer than you think, getting over to school.
Yeah. And I think it's a main access, egress access point between Losville and Superior. Plan something, that's what I'm gonna be using.
Yeah, I mean, you basically have two.
Two.
Yep.
I forgot that.
And I like the fact it's not necessarily signalized, so.
I like the traffic signal, too, 'cause I think it does eliminate the driver confusion. It's only activated when there's a pedestrian there, so most of the time, it won't be getting used to stop traffic. Only during those peak times when they really need to get across there, so I think it's the best solution.
So Gary, where are you proposing this? I think I kinda, huh? Alex, I'm sorry.
Alex, Gary.
I used to know a guy, Gary.
Gary's my twin brother.
Same last name, same last name, but that was all the way in high school. That was a long time. Where again is this proposed to be, as far as residents go, and then them having to have this in their backyard, the light?
At Passover, I don't know.
Where?
It's actually existing crosswalk, right?
Where is it? Where, same place where it's existing now?
Existence, yeah.
Okay, so you've got, well, you've got a couple houses.
There's a handful of homes there, yeah, that, that would see it, yeah.
Well, that one thing in the back there, that's not a house, so is it right next to the intersection? You're about. Yeah, that do.
Yeah.
No. No, okay.
What, and not that it'll happen often, but what's the delay between, so if somebody crosses and somebody, you know, changes to red, and the pedestrian comes up and hits the button again?
Four, um, forty, forty seconds.
Okay, so there'd be a minimum of forty seconds of green for the cars between, yeah, okay.
What's, what's a grand plan for eighty-eighth street anyway in the future? Is, is it gonna be a dual lane thing, or is, always gonna be a two-lane road like that?
That's what we have in our comprehensive plan, just two lanes, and, uh, you know, the only thing, you know, Conical Phillips, if they go, they did their traffic study, and they had, uh, you know, their recommendations. There's some real issues on the north side. But on our side, uh, it, it should go, we had predicted ten thousand in our comprehensive plan, uh, but that's probably gonna go to twelve, maybe fifteen thousand, because I don't think Conical Phillips was anticipated when we did the last comprehensive plan. So that's certainly something we would evaluate during this comprehensive plan update, you know, what the future of eighty-eighth would be.
How is Storage Tech, though, factored into it? I mean, Storage Tech was a viable company with its share of people coming and going, so how much different would it be than what Storage Tech?
It's, it's hard to say, you know, we, um, it was done with regional modeling, so Dr. Cog had that as an employment center. And, uh, whether, you know, what Conical Phillips is proposing is different than what Dr. Cog had in there. I'm just suspecting that it, that it's a little higher, that would make it more traffic, uh, on there than we expected.
You know, didn't we try to factor in what, in the comp plan? I mean, that's our vacant property that's in Superior. And that's got mixed use, you know, basically potential.
Yeah, we, we.
And zoning, so. So that, that's a gen- could be a, a generator also to some degree. Not a Conical Phillips, but it's definitely a traffic generator. So eighty, eighty-eighth is, you know, I, it, it, it can, and at some point way out in the future, may have to carry some traffic.
Yes.
Unfortunately, but that's the way it is. And I don't think there's, under thirty-six planning, of all the alternatives, I never really saw, maybe there was at one time, ability to get on to thirty-six off of eighty-eighth, but those have gone away, haven't they?
Yes, yes. Conical Phillips had talked about it, but they gave that up.
That makes it even bigger, you know, that's, that's not, I don't think that's gonna.
Well, it seems like a reasonably priced option for now, till we know what's gonna happen with Saharias, and what's gonna happen with the thirty-six corridor, whether we could put an underpass in, you know, if, if that becomes opportunistic at some point. Hundred and fifty-five thousand we're talking about, uh, like you said, to protect eight people a day. All right, I mean, we don't wanna do anything significant anyways.
If you build it, they will come.
No, 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 no.
That's only vehicles.
Well, that's why, that's why the stop, that's why the red light is so attractive, because it's truly a signal. It's a full signal, and. I'm not in huge favor of that. I mean, I, you know, the idea of stopping traffic, but it's not for very long, so I, it's, it's. You know, I like the flashing lights in Boulder, but in Boulder, they work, and I think you come outside of Boulder, and the mentality is slightly different. Um, people don't treat pedestrian intersections with, with the respect that they do in Boulder. Not that Boulder's perfect by any means, but you do tend to see at least a higher degree of, of.
Awareness?
Yes, yeah. Not to mention, there's just constant pedestrian and bicycle traffic, you know, that you, you have to. But, but as soon as you come outside of Boulder, that, so, um, yeah. But but as soon as you come outside of Boulder, that, so, yeah.
Okay, I think you have recommendations.
We're just asking if they have support.
Do we, do we think that that's the, I mean, is that your, is the, your recommendation is that signal, is that right? And there's no other improvement other than the signal itself?
There'll be crosswalk improvements, push buttons and so forth.
Well, ADA improvements or something, right? Is that the same?
And you said some advanced notice, some advanced.
If there's a signal coming up, especially where, probably put it on the other side of the bridge where you can't, you know, see the, you know, pedestrian crossings. So have a flasher over there that's warning that there's going to be a traffic signal coming up.
Does that flasher go when someone pushes the button?
Well, I think in that case, if we want it on the other side of the bridge where we need it, it's too far away.
So it flashes all the time?
It just flashes.
Is that something Lewisville has to approve or?
We'll probably consult. But I think it was something that a traffic and safety committee asked first of all.
Okay.
So we'll include that in our recommendations and in our cost thing, but we're at their old stage now in terms of, you know, design process.
That's your recommendation.
And it seems like these other considerations could be addressed in our comprehensive plan review, you know, later.
Oh, yes, that would be good.
Yeah.
Do you want a motion?
Well, I was just looking for.
Yeah, there is a motion there.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I had in mind.
You're always welcome to make a motion.
I move to approve a recommendation to proceed with the enhanced pedestrian crossing improvements on eighty eighth street north of Weldonia at the US thirty-six.
Do we need to, Fred, do we need to clarify what that enhancement is? Or is it just the staff recommended enhancements?
Yeah, could we just have the, to proceed with the.
You could say, isn't that, if that's an alternative, that's your alternative. You could add the word alternative in there.
Pedestrian activated signal.
To the pedestrian activated.
Yeah.
Traffic signal, okay.
Okay.
Okay. Good, you got it? Do we have to say it again? No, okay. I have a motion.
A second.
Second by Commissioner Rittnerster. Other discussion on the motion? All in favor? It's you now.
Save the children.
We have consensus. You're the guy who did it for it, right? Concludes item six on the agenda. Item seven is staff announcements and miscellaneous.
Okay, just have a couple to report. First one is, as you may or may not be aware, the town board has been doing a review of their advisory committee situation as well. Part of that is their liaisons, liaisons. And they have determined you're a statutory body and do not require a town board liaison.
Oh.
So you will no longer have a liaison, which in a lot of ways makes sense if you think about it, because it's a town board member who's going to end up reviewing what you're reviewing. So it makes sense. So that's item one. Item two is the comprehensive plan RFP update. We sent out an RFP the end of December. We had a pre-conference review with potential bidders. We had twenty-five people or firms represented. We had eleven who actually submitted proposals. And Fred, myself and another staff member are going through those proposals now. We're going to narrow it down to a list of three. Town manager's going to review those and we may end up interviewing a few of the applicants or, I guess, proposers. And we're hoping the goal is to bring, bring a recommendation forward to the town board at their February twenty-seventh meeting. And then we can start the process of working with planning commission and the town board throughout the whole process. It's going to be a very, what we're doing with the comprehensive update is it's fine tuning, refreshing what we have and doing things like looking at our traffic plans, you know, potential calming and also a big review of a lot of our vacant land to include parcels like this. So we'll keep you, keep you posted. If you have questions, let me know. And Fred or I should be able to address those. Does that work?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Okay.
Back to the advisory board things.
Yes.
Stuff that we were at some point supposed to discuss or make the commission aware of the things that were discussed during that?
They're still in process. I'm looking at Phillips on that one. But we haven't finalized things at this point yet, so.
Because there were several points and counterpoints that at some point we were supposed to bring back to the commission, right?
Right.
Just to make them aware.
Yeah, I think Matt's doing some fine tuning.
Yeah, I think it's Matt's still working on that.
Massage.
Because I think the, each committee is going to do a resolution. Now, I don't know if the planning commission.
I don't think it's necessary because they're.
Because of state statute, so I'm not sure.
Well, there were certain things though that we talked about in terms of terms and other other requirements and things that did affect the planning commission, so. I don't know, well, I'm not sure it's our decision to make, but but either way.
Okay. I'll provide you with an update, even if it's by email.
Right, okay, okay. Thank you. Anything else, staff?
I have a question or comment for staff.
Not really. The only other thing is there's some, there've been a few little things floating around that we're dealing with as staff, like for instance, dealing with CDOT and they wanted to build a new underpass over to the cemetery. We need to, under US thirty-six, so we need to sort that out a little bit. So it doesn't become a, a big old damp cave, which can happen under some of these, you know, crossings like that. So, you know, some stuff like that that we're working on, but nothing.
Well, the interchange study.
Hmm? Well, the interchange study?
The interchange study, yeah.
I'm not involved with that very much, you guys are.
Do you want an update on the interchange study, Alex? That's a, I forgot about that, I'm sorry, and this is my list.
But if you want an update on that, you know, Lewisville and CDOT and Superior have gotten together to, again, reexamine the McCaslin interchange, as you recall. We had an interim government agreement to put a northeast loop on on board and that was put on hold while the EIS was done. And so when the EIS was completed, we tried to enforce our agreements and hey, we're supposed to do something after the EIS is done. What are we going to do? What move on to the northeast loop? And I think they kind of squashed that. So we got a study, let's revisit this and the latest options that we looked at. Actually, Lewisville suggested that one of our town board members to look at a roundabout at the North Ramp, which is probably difficult to handle with the bonds we have, to look at a diverging diamond interchange, which will be interesting. So if that shakes out, we'll advance that and let you see that, to widen the bridge or do something with the bridge to to get a double left turn lane northbound to make that move onto the westbound entrance lane. So those are the three of options. We're also redoing the the traffic model in this area to look at what would another crossing look like if we did a crossing at the extension of the street.
Seventy-six?
No, on the other side.
On the other side, okay.
On the east side. About where Coal Creek is.
Yeah.
There's a street in Lewisville.
Dahlia.
Dahlia comes down. If you extended that over, connect to to Marshall and to the town center, what kind of, would that bring some relief of the traffic situation we had? So we're looking at at those types of options and we're doing traffic projections and evaluations of those. So that's something that may come forward to use if if recreation comes out of it, that looks like we're going to proceed with, so.
Check out the diverging diamond. Was it Utah and?
You can Google it on, it's on YouTube.
What's the other Missouri, there's one in Springfield, Springfield, Missouri.
Yeah, I, my question was, did it all have similar volumes? But then, again, I think the rope kicker and there were materials available and they want feedback by, I think it was, I forget, February twelfth or something. But a huge amount that has to get modeled in has got to be Marshall Road and and the pulsing off of that. Because if you look at the, there was a poster board up that gave the volumes that are Marshall Road versus McCaslin coming into it. And Marshall Road is two-thirds of of the traffic going northward into that intersection. And that's something I've known for a long time based on the traffic I sit in and seen relatively no traffic backing up as we cycle through.
On McCaslin?
Except in the early morning. So I I think that my comment, and I'm going to add this in and I talked to the consultants, but I don't think you can model that without modeling Marshall into it. But they were extending into Marshall. None of their models extended into into how Marshall would actually function.
Right.
They they may have understood there's some numbers, but you have to model in how, but how would it actually function as you get down to Marshall Road?
Right, and and one thing that's happening.
It's interesting, they they did some really cool simulation stuff that was, looked somewhat actually realistic.
Oh, yeah, he's got some cool stuff.
But the the simulation and model, the same contractor or consultant that's doing that simulation work has also done a transit priority study along the traffic. There's four interchanges on US thirty-six that have the potential for transit priority, where a bus is coming up to the traffic signal and they can count it early green or extended green. And so we we did the modeling and we, in that model, they go up to Marshall and they go up to Dillon. So we have that all in there. So the model's built and and that'll be, I'm sure, used when we when we look at the, get further into this study. But that's another study that may come forward because there's some issues about, do we, you know, penalize McCaslin and allow the buses to get on? What's the trade-off between bus delay and traffic delay? So we'll have that discussion going forward in several months.
Thanks, Alex. That's all I've got.
That's it?
That's all I have.
Just one comment. In the February Boulder County Business Report, there's a public sector employers list. And that you may want to, I'll leave this with you, but. There's a huge, very odd discrepancy with the town of Superior having twenty-five employees and a forty million dollar budget compared to Lewisville having, I mean, the obvious one, having a, actually a thirty-seven million dollar budget and about a hundred and sixty-five employees. If you look at it, it's weird, I'm sure, I mean, I don't know if you'll get other questions.
Well, if you think about it, we use a lot of contract employees.
Right, yeah.
And we contract with the sheriff's department for our safety. So that's a big chunk of that is.
Okay, okay. Because she, it just seems like we're a smaller town with a bigger budget.
Makes us look really good, doesn't it?
Taking all the money.
Yeah, yeah. But anyway, I don't know if you get other questions, but it's just.
No, I appreciate you pointing that out, thank you.
They need an asterisk.
What's that?
They need an asterisk.
Yeah, exactly.
Just one other thing too, I think there are several commissioners with terms expiring next in April. Is that true?
I don't have that.
I believe there are three or four that are expiring in April.
I believe so. And I don't know if that's going to be continued because now we're having the election in November instead of April. We did it corresponding with the election in April. So we can talk about that with the town manager and see if those are going to be extended. I can send an email and let you know whose those are.
You sent it to be five or six months ago, I think, but.
I can send it to everyone. Let you know whose terms would expire in April if that's what it's, what happened.
We'll stay if you increase our budget.
There you go.
Double it, double my pay.
That's right.
And time off too.
That's right, well, the time off's been okay.
I know.
Don't get used to it, we've got the comprehensive plan, so don't get used to it.
Yeah, there's been a lot of meetings.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, we are.